Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. City Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Davies?
Present.
Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
And Proton Jennings?
Here.
And Mayor Genaway?
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Chaplain Sharon Genton from the Orange County Sheriff's Department to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cub Scout PAC 773 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please feel free to join me. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, during this holy season, fill us with a spirit of kindness. May the message of love and mercy remind us to embrace and share all that is good and true and beautiful. During this holiday time, grant all Americans the wisdom to forgive old hurts, the willingness to grow in love, and the glowing spirit that reflects the golden rule. O Father, may all who pass the symbol of love be filled with joy and inspired to share your generosity and kindness with all those in need. Bless the Mayor, council members, city staff, first responders, and those who work and live within the city of Laguna Niguel. In your most holy name I pray, amen.
May the audience please remain standing. Color Guard, advance. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are not in uniform, please put your right hand over your heart. If you are, please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Thank you for leading us in honoring our country. These are our future leaders who are committed to scouting and the principles of scouting and working in our community, so we appreciate your being here tonight. Can we have the parents stand up of these boys? Let's give a hand to the parents because we know it's through the support of the parents that these boys are participating in Boy Scouts. It's the parents who do the signing up and the driving back and forth and all that, so we greatly appreciate your service to the community. Thank you. Parents like to come down here? And boys, if you could please tell us your name, just your first name, and what school you go to.
Hi, I'm Brayden and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary.
Hi, I'm Joshua and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary.
Hi, my name is Brayden and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary.
Hi, my name is Lucas and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Tommy and I go to Laguna G- Gal Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Zachary and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary School.
Randy Williams and I'm the PAC leader for PAC 773.
And now if the parents want to take pictures, let me just scoot back here. Okay, this, our first presentation this evening is on the Aliso Niguel High School STEM Building Edition. At this time, I would like to ask the Honorable Martha McNicholas, President of the Capistrano Unified School District Board of Trustees, to come forward for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Genaway and honorable council members and staff and members of the public. I have come tonight to introduce you to a very exciting project we're getting started in Capistrano Unified with a new STEM science building on the campus of Aliso Niguel High School. If you notice, this is a rough layout of the front of the building and it will be just to the, on the right-hand side. I think there's currently a little bit of parking there, so we'll give up a little bit. But it's, will involve about six, eight laboratories and associated prep rooms as well as some outdoor experimentation and science areas. This is what it'd look like as you enter. This is just our concept drawings at this point. This will support curriculum in not only our current biology and chemistry programs and our fast-growing forensics program, but also will support the next-generation science standards as they are adopted by the state that we will be involved with next year. We are currently in the design phase, so, and then we have to go through the state for approval, and then they go out for bids. We expect to shovel-ready in probably a year from now, probably next fall, and completion estimated in February of 2020. The, it's about an $11 million project will be funded from 87-1CFD. That's a melloruse for those of you in Laguna Niguel who luckily don't have to pay melloruse taxes. This is a melloruse area that encompassed both Aliso, Niguel, and Mission Viejo, and the project was developed collaboratively with representatives from the city, both cities, Laguna, Aliso Viejo, and Mission Viejo, on how to spend the, we have discontinued that melloruse, so those taxpayers have some relief about six years early, but this is the funds left in that fund, and this was a decision on how to spend that money. So we will continue to work with the school site and community during the design phase, so all the pictures are just kind of conceptual at this time, and we'll get into more details. And the other good news is it will be eligible for state matching funds if there are any left, so that's a caveat with the state. But look forward to addressing you frequently on some of the updates on our school district, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee McNicholas. So for those of you who are not familiar with our high schools, Laguna Niguel, we don't have a high school within our city boundaries, but our children go to two different high schools. So about half of our high school students go to Aliso Niguel High School, so we're delighted to hear that they will be getting a STEM building, and thank you for bringing us that information. So our next presentation this evening is a resolution congratulating Chief of Police Services Matthew Barr on his retirement from the city of Laguna Niguel. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Barr to meet all of us down in front of the dais for the presentation. Earlier, we presented Chief Barr with a resolution, a little more humorous, at his retirement reception, but this one is the official one from the city, and I won't cry. Okay?
I might.
Okay? And it's not allergies, huh? Okay. Commending, this is the resolution commending Lieutenant Matthew Barr, Laguna Niguel Chief of Police Services, August 2013 to January 2018. Whereas Lieutenant Matthew Barr has been serving local communities for 33 years with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and was appointed as Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Niguel in August 2013. And whereas, Chief Barr manages 44 Orange County Sheriff's Department personnel, four City of Laguna Niguel personnel, 21 police auxiliary citizens team members, and 20 CERT races emergency management volunteers. And whereas, prior to working for the city of Laguna Niguel, Chief Barr served as Watch Commander at the James Music and Theo Lacy facilities. And whereas, Chief Barr served as a sergeant for the cities of Yorba Linda, Laguna Woods, Lake Forest, Rancho Santa Margarita, and Stanton in various capacities. And whereas, Chief Barr has spent three and a half years as an investigator for the city of Mission Viejo. And whereas, you've done a lot. Chief Barr served as patrol deputy for the cities of San Clemente, Mission Viejo, Dana Point, and North and South Operations Division. And whereas, Chief Barr began his career by completing the Orange County Sheriff's Academy, followed by stints in the Intake Relief Center and Central Men's Jails. And whereas, Chief Barr earned a bachelor's degree in organizational behavior from the University of San Francisco, and has certifications in management, supervisory, advanced, intermediate, and basic peace offering standard and training post. And whereas, Chief Barr is recognized for his key strengths and attributes in problem-solving, developing solutions, community relations, team building, and public speaking. And whereas, on January 4th, 2018, Chief Barr will retire from law enforcement after nearly five years with the city of Laguna Niguel. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city of Laguna Niguel City Council does hereby commend Chief Matthew Barr for his exemplary years of dedicated service and commitment to the city of Laguna Niguel, and extends him the best wishes in his future endeavors. Have a few more, my council members will assist. Lori, would you like, Councilmember Davies, would you like to present that?
Thank you, on behalf of the council. I had the honor of being part of the selection committee when Chief Barr came on, and I can tell you, we were blown away from the interview right off the bat. We knew you were the right one, and obviously it was a good decision and a good choice. It's been a fantastic time. I hate to see you go. We've made great friendships, and you are well-respected here. Your staff, I mean, it shows, you've got an incredible team up there, and they respect you as well, so I want to thank you for giving me the privilege to work with you, and I know the other council members probably would like to talk to.
Well Chief, I said it privately, I want to say it here. You know, you really are the best of what public service is all about, you know? You are a tremendous public servant, but you're also my friend, and I appreciate everything that you did. It really means a lot to us to go to bed at night knowing that you and your team have been there for us, and you've really set a very, very high bar for all that is to come. So for your many years of public service, thank you for that, and especially for years here in Laguna Niguel, we couldn't be more happy, and hope you have a great time in retirement.
Well Matthew, I wanted to thank you for all your services for our great city. More than anything else, you've been able to sustain the beautiful first-class quality of life that all of us in this great city have been enjoying. The law enforcement is very critical in every community, and not just to protect, but to serve, and I wanted to commend you at this juncture for your retirement and all of your deputies that have done such a superb job, that we are very proud of you and your department. So thank you very much, and I've enjoyed meeting your lovely wife, your great family. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
You said earlier this evening that you didn't know if you were a good fit for Laguna Niguel. You were the perfect fit for Laguna Niguel, and we have a chief of police who serves the community with his heart. Whenever we have something that comes up, we go talk to him about it, and we find a solution on how to best serve our public, because public safety is a priority, but he's concerned with anyone from our youth through our senior citizens and everyone in between. So thank you for so much for caring about Laguna Niguel. It really shows in the police services. Yeah, as I'm glad. That's from the city. Gee, what could that be?
Yeah. I'm going to fingerprint it later.
Yeah. Uh-oh. I don't know that you want to show him that.
Are you going to kneecap me so I can't?
Oh, okay. It was, it was Chief Adam, so that's okay.
Oh, that explains things. Yeah, there you go. Fire Authority always trying to take out the cops.
Okay, mustache place. And let's see the other side. Done right way. So, not only does the city of Laguna Niguel recognize you, but so do our other elected officials. So we'd like to present a proclamation on behalf of Supervisor Lisa Bartlett. And this is a legacy of accomplishment. And do you want the "whereas's" read? They're pretty similar.
No, I think we got through that, yeah.
Okay.
I should have retired after 20 years. It was a lot shorter.
Yeah. No, actually, we want to keep you for a few more, but, okay. But that's from Supervisor Lisa Bartlett. And then we have, we have Rhonda Riordan, representing Senator Pat Bates.
This is the first time I've actually seen you as a mayor, and you do it well. Thank you. Well, Senator Bates could not be here, and this is her city, so I feel a limit, a little intimidated, because I am a poor substitute for Senator Bates. But you know her, and she knows you. This resolution, I want to show everybody how pretty it is. Look at how business brief. A lot of things to hang on your walls, right? So I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. I am going to say though, that Commander Greenberg back there did tell me that you are well-loved by your team of 44 people. So that is probably the best thing that could have been said about you tonight, is that you are well-loved by your very team, and that's great. I'm not going to read all the "whereas's" because the mayor did have all of the "whereas's" that we had, except we do have a little bit of a different beginning and an end, so let me do that for you. So Lieutenant Matthew Barr, Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Niguel, has announced his retirement after providing stellar leadership to the Orange County Sheriff's Department throughout his 32.85 years. That's what I got when I talked with him before the meeting in here. Throughout your 32.85 year of, years of law enforcement, and acknowledgement thereof, he merits public recognition for his many fine achievements. Did you think you were going to get this much public recognition, Matthew? Okay. Let me go on. So as Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Niguel since 2013, you have most ably supervised all of those 44 wonderful employees that love you, and community, including all of the community services officers, crime prevention specialists, deputies, investigators, and sergeants. But throughout your years with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, you have carried on a tradition of honorable and faithful service, distinguishing yourself as a versatile and knowledgeable law enforcement officer, contributing to the enhancement and reputation of the agency that you have so well-served. And as you embark on your well-earned retirement, you are bid a fond farewell and a heartfelt thank you for the job well-done. Now, therefore be it resolved by Senator Patricia C. Bates and Assembly Member William Peabro, that Lieutenant Matthew Barr, Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Niguel, be honored on the occasion of your retirement from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, commended for your superior record of dedicated and highly effective law enforcement service, and extend, extended the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the public. Congratulations. Okay. Yeah, very, very, very happy. Thank you.
No more parting gifts? At least not right now. Would you like to say anything?
I would, please. It is humbling to, to go through this and to hear everything that I've done from somebody else. Honestly, it wasn't because they were constantly trying to get rid of me. I think it was because I was doing a good job. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you to this community. Thank you to the council. Thank you to Mayor Ming and Mayor Lindholm in the back there for being on that council that chose me for this job. It is the capstone of my career, and I couldn't ask for a better capstone and a better place to be leaving from. I want to thank the department heads as well. It's been a fantastic team, and it is a team sport. It works best that way, and I know you all believe that, and I've really enjoyed being part of this team. So I want to say, say thank you to all of you. You've given me more than I have given to this city, in my opinion. You've given me memories, you've given me acceptance, you've just given me so much more than I could ever give to you or repay you, so I want to say thank you very much to all of you, and I look forward to seeing you continue and be prosperous and, you know, get a new chief who's going to come in and do another great job for you as well. I don't know what else to say, otherwise I'm going to start crying or something. So, I'm done. [applause]
retirement reception. Okay, that concludes our presentations and brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter, whether or not appears on the agenda, is required to complete a gold-colored form. Request-to-speak forms are available at the back counter. And please submit the completed form to the city clerk prior to being heard by the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. City Clerk Gomez, are there any other forms?
Uh, no, mayor, not at this time.
Just seeing if these are on agenda items. It looks like two of these are on agenda items under police services. Okay. So, we will wait until we address police services on the agenda. So, the first request to speak is from Stephen Tyanapour. Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Tyanapour, living in Laguna Niguel, 12 West Cliff, Laguna Niguel, for 27 years. And, "Good evening, Miss Mayor, honorable council members. And I served this country for over 50 years. And of course, in my profession, I get paid, but I did not get paid when I worked as volunteer. I am frustrated to see that some of the people who were put in the office are not serving us. And I'm proud to be citizen of Laguna Niguel and citizen of California, and resident of California also, United States. Honestly, I really am passionate for people that do good job, great job. We love them. But those who do not, I'm angry at them. They're not serving us. Your tax money going down to waste." I saw a letter from our governor, whom I respect very much, but I don't understand why a savvy governor would do something like this, with a list of $100 billion to President Trump or feral government for his need. A few of them are, for example, 710 freeway. We need that. But it's not as listed as high hazard potential as 678 dams we have in this estate. One of them is Orville Dam. Who has not heard about Orville Dam problem? We need that water in Southern California. And I don't know how city of Laguna Niguel is ready and resilient if more of that happens to us. I don't know how I can fix other things, but I can voice my concern to you. I'm chairman of readiness for Society of American Mental Engineers. They're apolitical, so we can't say much. When I send them a letter, I send to your attention, I guess. You've seen it before, before December 5. And I think, thank you for you, for former mayor, red mayor Minigore. I actually sent them, I don't know if you saw it or not, but by the way, before I continue saying that, I'm proud to see that we have an engineer, expert in traffic, and he had a lot of awards, by the way. And every time I drive here, I get bragged about, "I live in city of Laguna Niguel. The signal is synchronized. Everything is perfect." Thank you for that, by the way.
You have 30 seconds.
And I want to tell you that my time probably will be up quickly, but we have a few items of disaster example. Who hasn't heard about Katrina? Army Corps of Engineers won a $20 million, 2005, from then a mayor who's in jail right now. I don't know why, but I heard the rumor was he was in bed with casinos or whatever it is. He didn't let those people water for him to take the 200 buses around, and you paid for it. And that 2005, $20 million, how much do you think it cost us, the taxpayers? $88,000 million, they call it $180 billion. You can't touch it anymore. Compared with $20 million, $80,000 billion, that's about $91,000 more than the original estimated cost of repair.
That's your time.
It still hasn't been fixed. 300,000 homes became uninhabitable. And I...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyanapour. We appreciate your being here tonight. Your time is up.
All right, okay, all right.
Okay, our next speaker.
I sent you letters right there. If you want to read more about it, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Chair Alpert.
Good evening, Mayor Genaway, council members. I guess I'm really sad, because Agura's gone. It's dead in the water. And I'm hoping that the county doesn't let us down and put something else there that's not going to work in the city. I'm here speaking at public communications, because I also think that the additional funds going to an attorney's firm for the witch hunt that was after Jerry Slusiewicz is ridiculous. He's resigned. I don't believe we should give the attorney firm any more money. And he was not the abuser. The abusers were Rod Foster and Part of Staff. And you guys need to understand that our problem started when that man came to the city. And I'm sad to say that I look at all of you for the leadership, but I'm not seeing it. And it really disturbs me that this happened. You didn't even give him, the night he resigned, the accolades or even the courtesy of mentioning it during your session. It was in the newspaper the next day after the meeting. So, with that said, I hope, moving forward, that you all think a little further and a little harder about what's transpired, because I think if we would have been concentrating on Agura instead of the hunt that was going after Jerry Slusiewicz, it might still be alive. Thank you.
Thank you. And the two additional public comment slips, I'm assuming these are for the item agenda under police services. We have one from Bill Munn on traffic control and police protection, and one from Andy Favor on noise enforcement. Are those specifically to the agenda item, gentlemen? Okay, so you'll speak during that time. And Mr. Munn, you'll be speaking during police services? Okay, thank you. Okay. City Clerk Gomez, are there any more request-to-speak forms?
Uh, no, we had one, and I just put it in your, with the city attorney items.
You put it where?
I put it underneath.
Okay. But nothing else for non-agenda items?
Uh, no, mayor.
Okay, so that closes public communications. We are now moving to our consent calendar, items 1 through 16. And I'll see if there are any items that need to be polled for discussion. I'm pulling item number nine. Councilmember Davies? Okay. Councilmember Minigore?
One abstaining.
You're abstaining on item number one? Okay. And Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was going to pull 11 and 14, and I needed to make a note similar on the warrants. One of the payments was out to Elisa High School marching band, which my son is in, so I wanted to make sure I abstained on that one. But other than that, I don't have any abstention.
Okay, so we have items number nine, 11 and 14 are polled. Councilman Minigore will be abstaining on item number one, and Mayor Protem Jennings will be abstaining on the Elisa Niguel High School band item on the warrant register.
Correct.
Balance has been moved by Councilmember Davies.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Minigore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion carries. Okay, and City Clerk, did you get the abstentions on that? Okay, very good. Okay, so the first pulled item is item number nine, and that is for the approval of plans and specifications to advertise for construction of entry sign monuments at various locations and decorative elements on Crown Valley Parkway. And the reason I had requested that this be pulled is I would like to see some representation of the size of these structures. We've had comments from our community, and it is something that I'm concerned about as well. And then we've had, again, comments from our community that they seem quite large. So, I would like to see us put up some story polls and even wrap them, because the beauty of our city, when you drive through our city, is you see all the greenery, you see the rolling hills. We don't want anything obstructing those views. So, there's a concern that with the size of these signs, that might do that. So, I think if we have a representation up that we, the council, can take a look at, and then also our residents can, it may get us to either adjust the size, or say, "That's okay," or say, "Let's go back to the drawing board." But I think we do need to have that information. And perhaps if we had it in two different heights, because I know 10 feet is proposed in here, but maybe if we had a 10-foot and then a 8-foot, so we see the difference. And Councilmember Davies, you wanted to pull this as well?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to piggyback on that. I know we were discussing, and you've actually brought that up today, because that was a concern that we were hearing from the public in regards to the size of these monuments. I think it would be a good idea to be able to put this, you know, a structure up that we can really get a better visual on it. And again, I think right now it's a 10 by 8. You know, perhaps we put something that would be a 6 by 8, something like that, too, so you can kind of see the difference. But I think it's important that we, you know, go through this process before we actually go ahead and approve the size. But with that said, though, I would go ahead, because I believe that that's what we're going to do with this, with this agenda item, is we can approve it, but we'd go into that process first before we would approve the size. Is that correct?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and approve the item, so we can advertise. What we'll do is we'll hold off on advertising the project till we do the mock-ups on islands. Once we get the feedback from the city council, depending on the size that's selected, then we can go ahead and advertise the project.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Councilman Minigore?
Uh, Councilmember Lori Davies, I just wanted to ask a technical question, because the item was initially discussed, if you may recall, in the ad hoc committee. So, is it going to come back to the council, or is it going to go back to the ad hoc committee for the final determination, and then to come back to the city council?
I believe the item will come back to the city council, but it's your pleasure.
Because it seems to me, I'm on the ad hoc committee, and you're the new, you'll be the newly-appointed.
I think I just got appointed to the ad hoc committee.
No, no, later in the agenda.
We got away.
Right, right. So, is that a matter of technical?
Well, I have a comment on that, if you want. First of all, I respect the opinions. I had a similar opinion this morning. The Public Works Director and their staff took some pictures of our neighboring communities, of their monument signs and the sizes and the relative positions of those things. And that was very helpful for me. Actually, I was going to come in tonight and recommend that we approve it based upon what I saw, because I thought it was pretty good. But I'm not against the proposal. I don't see any downside of that. I would recommend that we go ahead and approve the agenda item subject to this. And with respect to the ad hoc committee, I don't, I think we're going to change the look or feel of them. We're really talking about the size. And just to, for expedience purposes, I'd recommend that we just bypass the ad hoc committee, bring it right back to the council, and we can make an up or down vote on it. I think it'd be more efficient that way.
Yeah, and I think those pictures that staff took in different cities was very helpful. But that doesn't show me what here in Laguna Niguel are we losing a view of. And that's important. So, that's why I do want to have us actually see the representation out on our streets. I would be in favor of approving the item, as long as the dimensions come back to the city council for approval.
Correct. Like I said, we will not advertise the project. We'll hold off till the final size have been approved by the city council.
Subject that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one quick question. What's the time that you think?
I don't know the availability of the city council, but over the next couple of weeks, we can do the mock-ups.
Is that something we're going to perhaps put on the website, too, so we can get feedback from the public?
We'll publicize it through, Ms. North will publicize the locations.
Thank you.
Right, that would be great, because then the residents can go out and see the mock-ups and then provide feedback. Any other discussion on the item? Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, subject to that modification, I'd move the item.
I second the motion.
Go ahead, Fred, go ahead.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilwoman Minigore, to move the item subject to the modification of doing the mock-ups and coming back to council for size approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 11.
This was one that I pulled, not because I have any problem with the request at all. In fact, I support the request. This is one in a series of similar type of requests, where we're asking for relatively modest fee waivers for very well-established organizations here in town. And rather than forcing those entities to continue coming back to the city council and chewing up a little bit of administrative time, I asked staff what we have done in the past to attempt to sort of circumvent that. And I found one other instance, I believe this one was from 2016, and dealt with the botanical preserve when they were requesting a fee waiver. And they included in the recommendation in the proposal, the authority for the city manager to waive those future facility use fees. And you could cap that in an amount, I don't know what the amount would be, something not to exceed $2,500 or something like that. But what I don't want is I don't want groups in our community to either not hold events or have to go through something simply because they might have to bring it to city council and go through the delay and that type of thing. So, my proposal was going to be that we include in this, first of all, approve this item, but also include some authority administratively, so that that could come back. And I think if I, I'm making up another, but I think $2,500 seems to be well outside of where most of them come in, something less than $2,000, but that would provide some leeway. And I'd make that proposal.
I have a point of clarification, Mayor Protem Jennings, of non-for-profit organizations or any organizations within the city boundary that would be coming to the city and requesting from our new city manager for exemption to pay up to maybe $2,500. I have no issues with that. But just, we have to make that distinction, any service organization or non-for-profit.
Well, I guess my response would be, that would be a case-by-case basis, that the city manager could then use her discretion at the time to make that decision. To the extent that it was rejected, or they said no to it, they'd always have an appeal right back to the city council anyway, and we could go through this process again, and they could request a waiver.
And are you considering an annual cap?
Well, I hadn't thought about that, but I...
You know, because there's a soft cost to it. I mean, there's, and I'm in full agreement of waiving these for our nonprofits, but there's a soft cost as far as staffing. So, if we have then all of a sudden groups coming in, "Well, let's do something every month." Well, then that can be, so we may want to consider a...
I think that's fine. And I would suggest that we probably want to talk to staff about what that might be and what, I don't know historically what the uses has been like that. But you're not wrong. So, you know, if it was $5,000, that's fine with me, and otherwise, subject to city council group.
So, maybe we want to direct staff to come back with a recommended policy on this?
I think that's fine. I think it would be, I think it would be better served that way, so that we...
Right.
I'm trying to create a system where, you know, there's more participation in the community without having to involve, you know, the staff time it takes. Because I'm very mindful of the fact that these staff write-ups take time, and it slows down their process, and it slows down the process of the community organizations, too. So, I guess my, one, I would move the approval of this agenda item, because I want it to pass. And then, secondly, propose a motion or a recommendation that staff bring us back a proposed policy that we could use and consider.
No, I'm in full agreement with that. Councilmember Davies?
Just a quick comment. It's not going to be a lot of money, but with our, we have our, I think, our first budget review in February. Maybe that's something, then we start looking at what we're going to put into that category in regards to that.
I like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to approve this item and direct staff to come back to us with a recommended policy.
That's correct.
And you moved that? Who seconded it?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Minigore. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain. Motion carries. Okay, item number 14.
I pulled this one as well, and it's really a little bit of wordsmithing. Item number 14 is a, is a new proposal to amend the duties of our investment banking audit committee, which I think is a fantastic idea. I support the agenda item. I support the agenda item. One thing I wanted to do in the, on page two of the, of the staff report, there, there's a list of duties as they are to be amended. They talk about for construction project amendments or agreements, for professional services agreements, for maintenance services agreements. And my proposal would be to add the words "current" before each of those so that we're talking about current project agreements and so that the Investment Banking Audit Committee is focused solely on our prospective current agreements. And this isn't a, you know, absent some additional authority that they're invested in or they request from the council that they're not looking into other things that far back. I think it's sort of outside the scope of their, their calling as a, as a, as a committee. And I would recommend that we add those words. So to be more specific, on each of the agreements on items 1 through 8, on page 2 of the staff report, I would just add the word "current" before those agenda items.
Okay, that really doesn't change the intent. It provides clarification.
Not in the slightest. It's not intended to change the intent. I'm hoping I'm just being more clear.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I'll just piggyback on this. I'm, I'm part of the IBNA as well, and I, we have a great committee up there. And I'm glad to see that they're willing to take on more responsibility. I think it's great for our checks and balances here. So before it gets to the council, we've got their expertise in their eyes. So I think bringing on more responsibility to them is the way it should be. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Aye, so move.
Okay, so move with those clarifications noted, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that takes care of the consent calendar. Okay, so our first item of business is Police Services item number one, and that is a request to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 Orange County Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Contract. Chief of Police Services Barr, can you please provide a report?
Certainly, Mayor. The item before you tonight is a request to amend the 2017-2018 Orange County Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Contract Agreement. That agreement was approved on June 20th at your, your budget meeting. Staff request City Council approve to amend the current agreement by adding two additional motor deputies and approve participation in the Orange County Sheriff's Department's False Alarm Fee Program. If you do approve this tonight, the requested amendment would be brought back before the council on January 16th for final approval. The background on this, again, the contract was approved in the amount of $13,314,207 on June 20th of 2017, and that was approved unanimously by the council. The addition of two new DUI traffic enforcement deputies was approved in that contract. And the addition of two new motor deputies was discussed during the contract review. However, their addition to the contract was delayed for six months pending further review of the city's available budget and required traffic enforcement needs. The two DUI traffic deputies have been very successful in the city with numerous DUI arrests in the evening hours and drug, excuse me, DUI and drug-related arrests, the issuance of numerous moving citations and numerous traffic accidents investigated. The positions themselves have only been around for about six months when they were approved as of July 1st. It did take us some time to fill one of those positions, but even with that, they've actually been quite effective out there in dealing with some special requests from citizens regarding traffic along the roadways here in the city. Due to several staff injuries, temporary position vacancies, and newer staff assigned to patrol training in 2017, estimated position credits will be applied to the 2017-2018 contract. These credits will assist in offsetting the cost of the added positions in the middle of the contract year. With the availability of the position credits, continued requests for increased enforcement and to further enhance public safety, staff recommends adding the two new motor deputies to the fiscal year 2017-2018 law enforcement agreement. Additionally, council unanimously agreed during the fiscal year 1718 budget discussions to begin participation in the Orange County Sheriff's False Alarm Fee Program in an effort to recoup the cost of response to habitual false alarms. At the time, the Sheriff's Department was in the middle of a fee study for the false alarm program. It was felt prudent to wait until the study was complete to begin participation with that study now complete and the fee set at $85. Participation in the program requires a resolution by the City Council, which can be brought before the council on January 16th, at the January 16th council meeting for approval along with the requested amended agreement. Funding and fully equipped, the two new motor deputy positions will be covered by the position credits provided by the county in this fiscal year and through the city's vehicle replacement fund. There will be no added cost to the fiscal year 2017-2018 Police Services budget. There is no cost for participation in the False Alarm Fee Program. Cost recovery could result in tens of thousands of dollars returned to the city depending on the number of repetitive and habitual false alarms. The fiscal impact of amending this contract and adding the deputies in the 2018-2019 contract year will be approximately $524,000. And that's based on current contract costs. In addition, one-time capital cost of approximately $90,000 would be incurred by the city for the acquisition of two motorcycles and their related equipment. It's recommended that the City Council approve efforts to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 Orange County Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Contract to include the addition of two new motor deputy positions and the provision for False Alarm Fee Program to be, to present to the council for consideration on January 16th, 2018. Have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Chief Barr. Yeah, last Thursday, Mayor Pro Tem Jennings and I met with Chief Barr and Sergeant Songer and interim City Manager Erlinson, excuse me, and Assistant Interim City Manager Bell to discuss safety in our city, do this review that we said we would do at the budget workshop, do a mid-year review of staffing, and also discuss some other issues. But we appreciate your bringing this forward. We do have some public comments. And I also think, do we have a workshop coming up, Chief?
We are scheduled for a- Very sensitive button. We're scheduled at this time tentatively for a February 15th Traffic Safety Town Hall Meeting as we did last February, I believe it was, after we had some unfortunate fatal accidents here in the city.
Okay, thank you. So we have some requests to speak on this agenda item. First one is Bill Munn. And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
The name is Bill Mudd. I'm at 25182 Monte Verde Drive, Laguna Niguel. I appreciate the floor time here tonight with everybody, and I'd like to say I'm definitely in big favor of adding these two patrol cars or bikes to the force. I, I also would suggest that the, perhaps there's a little more visibility with the presence of this patrol because I feel that rather than hiding and wait, I think having visibility may help preclude some of these accident situations that we're seeing. I, I think that the speed limit reductions that have taken place have been positive, but I'm still seeing people driving 12 and 17 miles over the new speed limit. So I, I think that we still have a long way to go when it comes to trying to get people to back off and to some of the tailgating problems that I've seen. And I, I think that we still have a long way to go. I don't think we're there yet. I see and I hear too many traffic accidents go off day in and day out, and some days it's two and three sirens hitting the streets. And I know that these are serious accidents. It's actually heartbreaking because a lot of times the people that are responsible for these accidents are not really paying the price. It's, a lot of times it's innocent individuals, and I think that's heartbreaking. So one suggestion that I'd made earlier is that the police presence is made more visible. Another suggestion I might make too is that there's more speed limit signs posted and that they're not a quarter of a mile or a half a mile apart. This is another problem I see that can add to some of the safety factors of trying to get traffic to slow down. Also see problems with traffic on Golden Lantern. I'm not sure if those speed limits have been reduced, but as far as I can tell, they're still at 50 miles an hour, which puts the flow of traffic at about 65 to 67. If you really get out there and measure it, if you can keep up with it, it's pretty frightening because these roads were never designed for those speed limits. And so I, I am 100% in favor of adding these patrol vehicles to the force.
You have 30 seconds.
And I also would just like to reinforce the fact that I think we just need to see more presence on the street. And I think there could be a big plus in trying to reduce some of these traffic accidents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mudd. I have a question for Director of Public Works, Abizadeh. I know when we have the, the speed limits on certain streets, there's a legal requirement about how often we can revisit that and lower the speed limits. Can you tell us what that is?
In order to post speed limits, we're supposed to do speed studies once every seven years. And the entire city actually was completed in the last probably 18 months. We went through the, all the roadways in town and did the speed studies. And as the speaker pointed out, on several of the roadways in town, we actually have reduced speed limits by approximately five miles per hour on the average. So the studies were completed, like I said, in the last 12 to 18 months, and those are valid for the next five and a half, six years.
Do we have the option to do it more frequently?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker, Andy Favor. You could please state your name and address for the record.
Andy Favor, 24121 Oleander Way, Laguna Niguel. First off, I have had two false alarms and I felt guilty for not being fined, so go for it. [laughter] Uh-oh, what did I do here?
I've never seen that.
That's your fine right there.
[laughter] I understand what it is that we're enforcing the noise ordinances, and so my prepared remarks deal with noise, so that's my focus. I'm a 28-year resident of Laguna Niguel, and I've come out tonight to thank the City Council for taking up the issue of excessive noise in our community. In recent years, it seems there's been a movement in which exhaust systems have been modified in violation of Vehicle Code Section 27151, which requires that mufflers are not modified to create excessive or unusual noise. Despite this law, increasing numbers of residents are modifying their vehicles to be as loud as possible, making just walking to the grocery store an unbearably painful experience. I hate to bring up what the Europeans are doing, but the European Commission on the Environment has stated that prolonged exposure to noise can lead to serious health effects, cardiovascular disease, cognitive impairment, and mental health problems. As such, European countries are enacting policies to limit vehicle noise. I get that enforcement of this law is hard, but other communities such as Laguna Beach have attempted it, and perhaps coordinating with our neighboring cities could bring efficiencies. Also, it seems like the majority of the cars that speed past me have modified exhaust systems. I think enforcement of the noise issue would also cut back on some of the speed issues. Our city's population is growing with some of the high-density development. Enforcing the noise ordinance will help restore some of the tranquility implied by our "sea country" motto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Favor. Okay, so that closes, public comments on that agenda item? Any discussion? Or is there a move to approve the recommended action?
I have a couple of comments if I could, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Senator Mayor. You know, we live in Laguna Niguel. It is, by all accounts and by acclaim, one of the safest cities in California, which makes it one of the safest cities in the country. It's also recently been recognized as one of the safest cities and best cities to raise children and, and to raise a family. And I think those are very important. You know, anything that we do now is only trying to enhance that, to add to it, and to make this always a better place. And I think that's our job as your public servants to try to do that. Over the last several months, in fact, since my tenure on council this last year, one of the primary conversations that keeps coming my way is the discussion of what can we do about the speeds, the excessive speeds? What can we do about decreasing the excessive noise? And so I, I asked that this be placed on the agenda, and I want to thank Mayor Genaway for joining me and placing on the agenda so we can actually have a public forum to talk about this. It's, nothing could be more important than ensuring our public safety. And each of us enjoy extraordinarily smooth streets. Your City Council has spent truly millions of dollars over the past many years ensuring that we have some of the best streets probably in California. And our new modern vehicles are able to travel on those streets at speeds which probably are in excess of the posted speed limits. And one of the things I want to not miss in this calculus is the, the concept of personal responsibility. It really is up to all of us when we get behind the wheel to slow down, to be more aware, and to, and to think about our neighbors and all that. Because it would only take the loss of anyone, a neighbor, a friend, a family member, for us to, for this to be brought very home. And it's something that's very important. So we sat down last week, as Mayor Genaway said, and what, what you quickly learn in talking with Police Services is that we enforce all of these things. They write an abundance of tickets for, for speed violations, for excessive noise. And so I know they are doing many of the right things. And I want to make sure that we give voice to that. And I also want to say, and I think some of the speaker's comments were on point, that appearance is everything, and deterrence is very real. And so we've, and as part of our discussions last week, we were talking about working with Public Works and using our trailers and our signage around town to make the statement that Laguna Niguel doesn't support excessive speed, that we enforce our noise ordinances. And simply by making that overt statement publicly and externally on our, on our, on our resident-facing screens, people will know that. And that is a deterrent, and I think that's a real benefit because we are enforcing it. Now, that led to another issue. Through Mayor Genaway's leadership last year, as the chief indicated, we added two additional deputies, which makes a real difference. But due to the ever-unforeseeable circumstances of law enforcement, two of our deputies were removed from active duty because of injuries they sustained while they were on the job. And so we are two deputies in a deficit. Now, from a financial standpoint, we get credits for that. We don't pay for people who are not working, and our contracts with the Orange County Sheriff's Department handle that. But from a very practical standpoint, that's two less deputies that we have on our streets at any given time. Now, tremendous kudos go to Police Services because our other deputies have done yeoman's work in stepping up to take overtime in other positions to fill those positions around town. And so we have, through very good efforts by them, maintained consensus staffing levels and enforced requirements on our streets. But in truth, we are too down. The discussion that we had last year was that we really should have six additional deputies. That was the recommendation that we received from Police Services at the time that we were doing our budget review. Through a consensus, the council agreed unanimously to put two more deputies on the street. And that was a step towards trying to get to the full staffing levels. And I think it's important to take an aside and note that Laguna Niguel is asking to do something that our sister cities are not. They are actively reducing staff on their Police Services primarily because of budget issues. And it's no great secret that Police Services is by far the majority of the money that we spend here. But Laguna Niguel is blessed with the resources to do this, and when the Police Services tell you that they need additional staff, and here's the reason why, I think we are duty-bound to listen to them. So the idea was is that let's go ahead and amend our contract, add these two new deputies for the full fiscal year that's coming ahead of us. That comes free of charge to us because we were already headed budgeted for the two deputies that are sidelined because of their injuries. So we are net neutral for the next 12 months, and the fiscal year that follows that, this is still with inside the recommendations that the Police Services gave us last year, and we are heading towards full staffing on that. So I think it is a win-win everywhere. It allows us to actually have a, a much brighter visibility on the streets, to actually have stronger enforcement, and it relieves some of the pressure that's on our current deputies for the overtime and the other things that they're doing to keep up. I'm a very strong proponent of this. I think it's the right thing to do, and I would like to- And I would like to periodically bring this back so that we can reemphasize again that we don't tolerate excessive speed in this town. If you are speeding, you should expect to receive a ticket for that, and we need to have the staffing that can do that. If you have excessive noise in your car, if you have modified your exhaust systems, you are bothering your neighbors in your community. You should stop that, and you should expect to receive a ticket for that. And if we can do some personal responsibility and take the reins on this, I think we can really make a difference. Because what could be more important than our safety? So with that, I thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment in regards to the false alarm fee program. I know we've had this come up for the six years that I've been here, and I know we're talking about regulations and that, but this isn't about the income coming in. If you realize that when there's a false alarm, it takes at least two officers off the street. And really what this is, it's $85. I know a lot of the other cities are much higher, I recall, in regards to what they're charging. This is a deterrent. It's kind of like my HOA. You put a violation out there, you just don't want them to keep the garbage can out there. It's not that you want the money, just don't do it. I think that's what this is for, but this is important, again, because you don't want a false alarm, and you have to have at least two of your officers off the street when they should be on your street patrolling it. So I think it's time to have this, and I support that.
Thank you. Councilmember Minigar?
Thank you. I wholeheartedly support this motion to approve the allocation of funding for almost half a million dollars for the two motorcycle officers. In my opinion, I think our police department has done such a superb job, and not to repeat what my colleague Mayor Protem Jennings mentioned, that I wanted to ask this question from Chief Barr. What is your projection for fiscal year 2017, 2018? Now that we're going to be adding two motorcycle officers, then what is the future, what's the outlook of enforcement with regard to these motorcycle officers to be visible, you know, on the streets of Laguna Niguel? Do you think that we may get to the four motorcycle officers, or we're going to be basically two by the end of the next fiscal year?
These are specialized positions, and it does require recruitment. We don't just have a staff of deputies that are trained on how to ride a motorcycle or do enforcement on a motorcycle. So we have to do recruitment for deputies who are interested in that type of thing. Obviously, as you've mentioned, we've had two that were injured. It is a dangerous job, and so we have to get them properly trained. We have to get them properly trained in how to do the enforcement with LIDAR. And the noise issues, it does require additional training to properly enforce some of the noise issues that are out there. So we do know that there are people interested in the position and who want to work in Laguna Niguel. We've worked hard to get to that point where people want to work here. And so we have some people that are interested, but it's going to take us some time. It usually takes somewhere between two to four months to get the vehicles themselves. It can, we, it takes a couple of months to get people into the training class for riding a motor. So there will, but there's going to be no cost in fiscal year 1718. There is. You'll see it in the contract, but there's going to be credits as a result of the two injuries that we've had. Eventually, our hope is that those two deputies will fully recover and get back on the bikes. I cannot give you an estimate of when that will be. One's injuries are more extensive than the other, but we're hoping that they come back. I just can't give you an estimate as to whether they'll be back in this fiscal year or not. As far as cost, I think, like I said, there's going to be, it's cost-neutral at this point for 1718.
Very good. Your points are well taken. Then that leads me to my next question. Then, in lieu of having two injured motorcycle officers, we have other deputies filling for the gap that was created to enforce the speed laws in the city and other marginal activities?
What we're doing at this point, we've opened those two positions for overtime. The difficulty in that is that, again, it's a specialized position. It requires specialized training, and the only other motor officers that are available are either the ones that already work here, working overtime on the motorcycle, or deputies from other cities who ride a motorcycle and are trained, and them working overtime here. We do our best to fill the positions. I'd say on average, we're probably filling about 50% of the vacancies with deputies on overtime from our city and from other cities. But we also monitor that because, again, it's a dangerous job, being a motor officer. And they're working 12-hour shifts, and they work three to four days a week. We try and monitor to make sure that they're not working too many days on a motorcycle because it can be dangerous.
Well, I understand the given situation at this juncture, but my question is, an average citizen in our great city would see a kind of gap in the enforcement, or because of your style of management, you've tried by a combination of overtime that you mentioned and bringing maybe other deputies from Alisa Viejo, Dana Point, or Mission Viejo to help you out? We've been able to neutralize that. So average citizens don't see any lack of enforcement for people that would be speeding on the roadways in our city?
Unfortunately, I would disagree with the presentation that way. We are receiving more calls. I know the council and the mayor are receiving more calls and emails, and I know that the city manager also receives those calls and emails regarding requests for additional enforcement. So we're, with the increase in population, with the increase, not only here in Laguna Niguel, but throughout South Orange County, with the increase in traffic, we're getting more of those calls for specialized traffic enforcement. And so I can't say people are noticing that the deputies aren't out there, but they're noticing that there needs to be more enforcement, which is part of why we're bringing this We're filling it the best we can with the resources that we have. Unfortunately, there's not much more we can do. Doing this, adding these two positions, will get us ahead. If we wait until the new fiscal year, it's going to take a couple of months after we approve those to fill those positions. So this, we'll have some time to fill the positions. It'll get in there, and then if you decide that you want more in the next fiscal year, you could certainly do that. And then related to the visibility issue that came up earlier, and something that you're expressing here as well, the deputies don't, the deputies don't try and hide from the public to do their enforcement. I know that's, that's, a lot of people think that's what they're doing, but the reality is, is that it is a dangerous job to be on a motorcycle and get hit by a 2,000, 3,000-pound car. And the way the streets are here in Laguna Niguel, and we have people, the fastest I've seen is 115 miles an hour. We have a picture of that radar screen, and that's on Crown Valley. So people, most recently, I think it was 108, people are driving extremely fast through the city. We have, the deputies have to be very careful where they place their motorcycles. They can't get those motorcycles up onto sidewalks. Sometimes they can, but it's very difficult to get off those sidewalks. And we have discussed in the past the idea of setting up enforcement locations where they can ride those motorcycles into curb cutouts, special locations with cement pads in the middle of a boulevard or a median. That would help us with our visibility, and it's something that we've talked about before. So as far as visibility, the deputies will add that just by being out there, but there are other ways to increase visibility as well, and that's by giving us locations that our people can actually sit out there rather than hiding back behind something where they're not going to get run down. Because it does happen. People are always on their phones, and they tend to swerve into the, I see it all the time, they tend to swerve into the bike lanes quite a bit.
Very good. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make sure the public understands that to be a motor officer, it's very specialized training, so you can't take an officer from patrol car and put him on a motorcycle. So, you know, we want to bring the level of staffing and coverage throughout our city up. And we have building that's taking place also in the surrounding communities. So it's not just the population in Laguna Niguel, but we have Crown Valley Parkway that's a corridor between PCH and the freeway. So people who live in other neighboring cities are driving through our city, so that's where we're seeing an impact with traffic. And I'm also projecting ahead where if we add these two positions, and this is something we said we would look at and review during the budget workshop, but if we add these two, then when our other officers come back off of their medical leave, our population is increasing. We know we have developments going in, so we will have stepped up to that need. So is there any further questions or comments on this? Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda item.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Jennings to approve the recommended action, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Barr. Okay, our next business item is City Manager, item number one, and that is the City Manager Salary Resolution. Interim Assistant City Manager Bell, can you please provide us with the staff report?
Sure. I'll keep this brief. At your last City Council meeting, you approved a contract with Christine Ridge to be our next city manager, and by law, we're required to also adopt that salary by resolution on a publicly available salary schedule. And so what we have for you tonight is the formal adoption of the salary that the council extended to Christine Ridge. And there is special legislation that says for executive managers that the City Council has to read a recommendation and a report. And I will go ahead then and turn the time over to Mayor Genaway for that.
Okay. And this reads, "The City Council unanimously offered a monthly salary of $21,500 to Christine Ridge for the position of city manager. This salary is based on a number of factors, including the salaries of local comparable positions, relevant prior experience, prior city manager salary, and Ms. Ridge's current salary and benefits. The attached resolution documents this salary." Okay. Any discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the recommended action?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Davies.
And I second the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Minigar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Okay, now, unto City Council, item number one. And that's the establishment of an ad hoc committee for bus shelter design. Interim Assistant City Manager Bell, can you please provide the staff report?
Sure. Again, I will keep it brief. The City Council has made the determination through our budget process that we will look at changing out our bus shelters, and we've also had some discussion about possibly instituting a trolley line. And for that purpose, we have engaged a designer to help us design those new structures. The existing ones out there are from 1991, and they're a bit tired and in need of replacement. And for ease of moving forward, we'd like to ask council to consider forming an ad hoc committee with two council members on it to help give staff advice as we go through the design process so that our end product is something that the entire council will be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is there a motion to establish an ad hoc committee for bus shelter design?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Jennings.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council item number two, and that's the appointment of council liaisons to city, regional commissions, committees, and boards. City Clerk Gomez, can you please give us the staff report?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this item provides the opportunity for the City Council to consider the mayor's recommendations and approve, and appoint council members to various regional commissions and committees and boards, and also the council liaisons to cities' committees and commissions. So this is your item, Mayor, if you would like to review your proposed appointments.
Okay, well, I think the council members have had a chance to review the agenda item. Are any questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
Just a quick comment. If tonight we have an item, whether or not we're going to have a special election, appoint or not appoint, if we do appoint, and we've already done this, we can come back, Attorney Dixon, and perhaps take a few of these commissions and send them on over to the new appointed council member, correct?
Certainly.
Okay. That was the plan.
Wonderful.
Okay. Any, okay, it's been moved to accept as recommended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we have City Council, item number three, and that's the development of the city's shared vision. Interim Assistant City Manager Bell, you're on again.
Oftentimes, city councils have workshops, or they'll have tea-building consultants come out and help them determine what their shared vision is. In this city, it seems that we've been very busy taking care of business, and we don't have a lot of time to talk about our overall philosophy. And so council, or Mayor Genaway had suggested perhaps we could put this item on the city council agenda, that we could maybe decide as a council, you could select two or three or four messages or objectives that you'd like to accomplish, and just make sure that as a group, you're all on the same page and all working together towards reaching the same end goal. And for that purpose, this item is on your agenda this evening. It's very broad, which I know makes City Attorney Dixon a bit nervous, but so long as we're just having a general discussion, everything is fine. And we can bring you back as staff, any additional information that you'd like at a later date. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I know one of the most frustrating things in being on city council is that since our discussions must take place in public, the sharing and building on of ideas is often curtailed. As Ms. Bell stated, we're busy taking care of business. But we go to meetings, we go to regional meetings, we meet legislatures and policymakers from throughout the state or even throughout the country. We come across ideas that we'd like to share with our council colleagues, to see if this is something we'd like to implement, to build on, if this is something that would benefit our community. So the development of a collective shared vision should produce a mission statement or some sort of city identification that would be synonymous with Laguna Niguel, and one that our residents would take pride in, and also one that could be used with our city's economic development efforts. So I'm putting this out there to my colleagues, this is something that you don't have to decide on tonight, but to get that thought process started. You know, what's our vision of our city currently and in the future? What do we value as a community, and what do we support from a policy perspective? I mean, I jotted some things down, like public safety, quality of life, a vibrant community for our seniors, recreational and sports excellence, and the volunteer spirit. So if we have a shared vision, if there may be other values that you want to add to that, but then we come up with a, you know, one line, "This is Laguna Niguel." You know, I always think in parks, our park department said, "Parks make life better." So, and I know some of our faith communities have something that they identify with. You know, our faith community makes a difference in the lives of those in our community. So just something I, actually, just before the meeting, I was toying with some words, something along the lines of, "Committed to safety and excellence, to be the best place to call home, raise a family, and enjoy quality of life." So that's something to start the thought process, and if this is something that, and I'm putting it out to my council colleagues, I'm not making the decision here, I'm putting it out to you, so we work together on this. And do we want to discuss the vision? Do we want to come back to council? Do we want to send this to the ad hoc Economic Development Committee and then come back? But I'm assuming, and it may be a broad assumption, but since I go to meetings and I meet council members from other cities and they have great ideas, it's like, "Oh, I want to tell my council about this," and there's really not that opportunity, so this is that opportunity. Senator Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a good idea. I, you know, one of the crazy things about California law is the Brown Act, and, you know, which essentially says the best decisions are made on television, so that we all get to get, sit up here and come for the first time to understand what our colleagues are thinking on an agenda item. And I think this is something that we should do, and I'd like to see it frequently on our agenda so that we can perhaps talk about it. We are in a time of transition here. We're bringing on a new city manager. I think it's the right time to have these discussions, and perhaps after, you know, a month or so of meetings, we could have an opportunity to bring this back, have some pretty thorough discussions on what we're thinking on it, now that I've
Now that the seed is planted?
Now that I'm supposed to be thinking on it, I definitely have some ideas and would love to share those, and I think it could be a good idea.
Okay, good. Any other, Councilmember Davies?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's important that we have a mission statement for the city. We have mission statements for jobs, we have mission for the city. We have mission statements for jobs, we have mission statements for charities. I think it's a great idea. And there's always input that is needed, again, that we can do up here. So I would think that it'd be a great place to put on the economic ad hoc committee, just to get some ideas and bring it to the council from there.
Okay, so maybe get some wording together at the ad hoc committee. Any comments, Councilman Minigar?
My only comment is with respect to waiting for the decision that my colleagues would be making, how we're going to go about the vacancy in our council. I wanted to make sure that if we decide to appoint someone, or if we decide to have a special election, contingent upon the outcome of the vote that we're going to have tonight, then I would like to have the new person to also join us, because it's going to be all of us, it's not going to be just four of us, number one. And number two, we wait for our dynamic new city manager to join us, to get acclimated, to get acquainted, to get a good feel for the city. And then maybe two months from now, or maybe three months from now, then we can all discuss it in public, to talk about mission statement, objectives, what we want to do as a city. Because I recall that, quite frankly, during my term sitting here, I mean, I'm talking about 2017, I was preoccupied about a lot of other things that I called city business, and you're absolutely right. All my energy was focused in some areas that I didn't want to be, quite frankly. I wanted to use my energy to serve the people, you know, to be creative, to come up with rejuvenation, revitalization of our great city, to make it, it's a great city, to make it much greater. So with all that said, I think I would be voting on that, just to, great idea, but just to wait.
Well, and that's why we're having this discussion, is to start the discussion. We're not making any decision tonight, but I guess I wanted to put it out there to see what my colleagues thought, since we couldn't talk about this before, and how do we want to approach this. So it is, now you know what to be thinking about, and of course, we would be including our new city manager, and depending on what we decide on a future council agenda item. This is to be all inclusive, and, but again, it's just to start the process, and we could maybe come back and have this on the agenda, at least as a touchstone, maybe in a month, just say, this is what we're thinking, this, to share our ideas. Because, you know, there's, you know, a lot of ideas, a lot of energy up here, and we don't get to share that. And I know when you do brainstorming, you build something better. So if we could have it on the agenda next month, not to come to a final decision, but to see where everyone's at, and with the intention of this process taking a couple of months. Because I think our vision for our city and our city's mission statement is too important to be done very quickly. Okay? So if we could have this on the agenda next month, and now my council colleagues know what we're thinking about. Okay, thank you. Do you need anything additional from us on that item? Okay, great. Okay, and our last business item is City Attorney, item number one, and that is filling the vacancy on the city council created by the resignation of Jerry Slusiewicz as a member of the city council. City Attorney Dixon, can you please provide the report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Genaway, members of the council. According to the government code, when there's a resignation on a city council, a general law city, the city has, city council has 60 days in which to take action, and there are two potential actions that can be taken. First is to make an appointment to fill that vacancy, and the second is to call a special election. Under the present timing, with approximately three years left in Councilmember Slusiewicz's term, if the special election were called, it would be held in June of 2018. And the person elected at that special election would serve until the end of Councilmember Slusiewicz's term, namely December 2020. So at this point, council could appoint a person. That person would serve until the November 6, 2018 election. Then the remaining two years of Councilmember Slusiewicz's term would be subject to election in November 2018. The person that is appointed, if a person's appointed, to fill that term could, but wouldn't necessarily have to be a candidate for election in 2018. A little bit of cost, if the council called the special election, it would be held in June, it would cost approximately $60,000 to $78,000. If the council, instead of calling that special election, appointed somebody within the 60 days, then that election to fill the remainder of the term would be in November, and the costs of that would be considered along with the costs of the two seats that will be up. And the cost is about $47,000 to $60,000. So there would be basically a $60,000 to $78,000 extra cost if a special election is held in June. So again, two options, either appoint within the 60 days to fill the term until the November election, or call a special election to be held in June to fill the remainder of the term until December 2020. That concludes my report. If any members of the council have any questions, I'd be pleased to respond.
Thank you, City Attorney Dixon. So the cost of, basically, there would not be an additional cost to the city if the election for this particular position was held in November, because we already have two council seats that are up for election.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Before we go on to public comments, are there any questions specifically to Attorney Dixon's report? Okay, so now we have some requests to speak. The first one is Mike Whipple. If you could please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Mike Whipple. I live at 30896 Rivera Place, Laguna Niguel. I am here simply to express my willingness to serve if the city council decided to appoint me. I have, as you know, served in the past. I enjoyed serving on the city council. I recall when I ran, I thought back to the type of person I was in high school and college. And at that time in my life, I could not envision myself being on the city council. I had no aspirations to be in politics, or to be involved as a representative of the people. What got me involved was our airport issue, and I felt so empowered by the collective energy that we had in opposing the development of an airport in El Toro, that I felt very comfortable running for city council, and very much enjoyed being on the city council. During my time on the city council, most distinctive part of it that I remember is we had a council where the majority, on any issue, respected the opinion of the minority. There was no effort of three people who had the votes to ram something through and have it approved. But importantly, the minority who might oppose or have a different opinion also respected the decision of the majority. So it was a very, it was a very productive time. We now seem to live in a time where our national politics are driven by division, by trying to get something done, trying to get it done in opposition, without allowing the opposition or respecting the opposition's opinion. So I'm hoping that whatever you do in your appointment, whether you appoint me, or one of the other people who have an interest, or if you decide to go for the election in June, that we can restore to the city council that collegial attitude that we had in the past. It's been a tough couple of years. I haven't been in the council chambers, but I've watched you on television. I know it's been very difficult. So I hope that we can restore that. I hope that you could find that perhaps I could be one of the people that could help in restoring that
That's your time.
Attitude of cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
If you have questions? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary Capata. I don't see Gary. Okay, Randall Lipton.
Good evening. I'm Randall Lipton. I live at 29425 Christian Way in Laguna Niguel. I'm here to speak in favor of recommend, excuse me, recommendation one, that we appoint someone for the following reasons. Number one, cost. It's not in order of priority. Number two, five members of a council is a modest-sized council. And so I think it's not in the city's best interests to continue with four unnecessarily for a half year or more, waiting for a fifth person to join. Also, since we already trust you with running the city, I think we can certainly trust you with appointing someone well, and I've no reason to believe an election would turn out a better result than an appointment. So on that basis, I strongly recommend that you go with appointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipton. Okay, next speaker, Linda Lindholm.
Honorable mayor and city council members. I come to you tonight to offer to help and to fill out the next nine months. I have no inclination to run again for, I have a seat on the education board, but I have no inclination to run for that again, or to run for the council position. So I just want to clarify that upfront. As you're sitting in this building, this was one of the things that after 16 years, sitting on the council and four times as mayor, we did. We did with budget, we did with no loans, and it's beautiful. The reason to come back would be to help you, to be a team player. I wish Jerry all the best, but I would like to see go forward, because we have the new splash park, we have the bridge where it was always flooding, excuse me, and I'd like to see the community center be built. I want to thank, even if you don't appoint me, that's fine, our police chief for keeping our city safe, and any member of the police or the fire, you're there day and night for us, and I'm very grateful, and for all the staff, for the parks and rec and everything else. Background, if you need a background. I served on the ERB for two years, chaired the planning commission, I've served on that three years, 16 years Laguna Niguel City Council. Now I need reading glasses. That's what happens. I'd be very happy to be appointed, but whatever you decide is fine. I know you have a lot of challenges. And like I said, I'm looking forward to retirement, so when it's, nine months is up, I'm happy to step down. And I wish you all the best, and whatever decisions you make. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Next, Matt Clemmons.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Genaway. Thank you, I appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tem Jennings, and of course, our council members, Councilmember Minigar and Councilmember Davies, thank you so much for your service. And I have to start with saying I'm so grateful for Lieutenant Barr, our chief. You are just such a great man and such a wonderful friend, and thank you so much for your service from the bottom of my heart. It's, you're literally irreplaceable and very admired, so thank you. Tonight, I would like to speak against the appointment as one of those four past mayors that I see behind us. As we did just a few short months ago, we did have a vacancy, but that was just a few months where we did appoint a past mayor, so we do have a precedent there. I think that works for a short period. In this case, there are three years left on the term, so there is a couple options that the city attorney has made. But I do believe that there is some common ground that we could do tonight. Luckily, I am now twice the runner-up in the election, so I believe both times against Mayor Pro Tem Jennings, who fabulous opponent, but came very, very close in the 2014, as we remember. We talked about that before. And then this past time was runner-up again. I believe in the democratic process, I believe that this should be fair. I did have the opportunity to speak with mayor just this past Friday with our city of commerce. I do have the time to do it prior to my presidency for the Orange County Association Realtors in 2019. I believe that would be the fair and just and right thing to do. I would love to bring the energy and a fresh perspective to this council. I believe what I bring is 41 years of actually living here, born and raised right across the street, and I would love to help you guys arrive and share and create a long-term vision for this city. What I would promise you, what I would do is a fabulous job, and I would bring it for these nine months, and then I will promise you I will not run in that next election in November, and I will just be the president of the Realtors, and I'll give you my 1,000% best, and that is my offer. And thank you so much for everything that you do, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. And our final speaker, Robert Ming.
Good evening, Mayor Genaway, members of the council. I'm happy to report to you that I am not here to suggest myself as a candidate for this position. I think that you have done a tremendous job in leadership, and contrary to the derogatory comments you heard earlier from Ms. Salpert, I think you've done an amazing job of showing leadership through a very difficult time, and so congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your service. I know it has been difficult, and I know you've done a great job. Tonight, you have the opportunity to appoint, and I'm here to say that I think that that's a good idea, because you have some big things on the agenda. You need to move the Agora Project back into some alignment, or find some alternative, and that's going to be hard. And it would be wise for you to have someone else there to help you. I think that you have a project in the park that's coming up with that new building there. And I was actually very pleased to hear that Councilmember Lindholm is interested in this position, because she was one of the people who started that project and was the genesis for watching all that stuff over there happen. I remember the many years on the council with her where she was pushing and pushing and pushing to try to get those changes that we now see in reality. And so I think that if she's interested in doing that, that would be actually an excellent thing for you to do. But what I was going to say is that I think that you should pick someone who isn't going to run in that election, so that you can not upset that race in November. And so that will allow you to fill this gap with somebody who's got some experience, and frankly, I think Linda would be excellent at it. So thank you for your service. As you do consider this, I do think that it would be smart to think about who can best move that ball forward in those few months that we have to try to make this difference happen with some of these really critical things that you have on the agenda. So thanks for what you're doing. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ming. Okay, well, we have a couple of decisions before us, whether or not to appoint, to call a special election. Whether or not to appoint, to call a special election, and if we appoint, whether or not we appoint tonight or in the future. Councilman Menegar.
All right, let me go first. I, I think this is a very difficult decision with regard to how we are going to be making our decision tonight. I know that we have excellent candidates. Number one, to make the distinction between the two options that our city attorney presented to all of us. One would be to appoint versus the one that we go through special election. I'm against special election, because I think we should be saving taxpayers' money, not, I mean, I, I look at other cities that they go through special election. In my opinion, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. So I'm against any kind of special election in any shape or form. So that's my solid position. So I'm hundred percent in favor of appointing one individual to join us, to be a team player, to help us to excel, to help us to take the city, to make it greater. I mean, last year, or I keep saying last year, 2017 was a rough year for all of us and for me as one, and I wanted to make sure that if, it's a conditional statement, if my colleagues, and I have three of them, would decide to move in that direction, then, then the appointment would be the best choice for our city. With regard to to whom to be appointed, I mean, all the candidates I know professionally, I know personally, having lived here for twenty-seven years and having served as a public servant leader for twenty-one years, I don't need to introduce myself to any of these, you know, great volunteers that wanted to help us. I know all of them very well. I know their background. I know how they think. I know how they behave. I know how they decide. So my, my issue is not with regard, with regard to the lack of qualifications of any other individuals that are showing interest to help us. I appreciate all of them, and all of them are excellent, in my opinion, to help us. The only thing that I'm requesting is to make that determination whom to be selected, if we can make that decision during the next meeting of the city council, so that I for one would have more time, quite frankly, to think about, all the candidates are great, to make the best decision on that. So, so I leave it there.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Menegar. Councilwoman Davies?
Thank you, mayor, and apologize in the throat. I was shoveling snow in Wisconsin for the last week, and it makes you come back and be okay with the sunshine tax. So first of all, I want to thank all those that came forward to volunteer the service. It is a, it is a big commitment, and I really appreciate it. One thing I, I, for sure, is I'm not for a special election. Again, if we do a special election, we're going to be doing this in June. By the time you get done, it's four months. So you look at four months before the election, and you look at the cost, so it really doesn't make any sense. So for me, I truly believe we need to appoint. We don't want to have four people up here. We've got some big decisions coming up in regards to Agora, Sunpoint Development, and some other things coming down the line. A year and a half ago, I found myself sitting here with the same decision. Do we have a special election? So I realized, no, I really do think we should appoint. Then as well, or then as well as now, it's important that we can choose someone that knows the city well and its issues that we have been dealing with for the last few years. I come across the different decisions we have to make, and I'm going to tell you, when you first get in council, it's not that easy. It, it takes a few months to actually get your feet wet, and I think everyone up here can, you know, can agree about that, you know, figuring out protocol, feeling, you know, figuring out process. And so I think it's really important that we bring somebody that has experience. We've got one year, we've got big decisions. With that said, I believe that the best person to fill this position would be former mayor Linda Lindholm. She has the most experience, as she said, four-time mayor, serving sixteen years, as well as the most current council member, having turned out in 2014. I had the honor to serve with her for two years, and I'll be honest, she was a mentor to me. I learned a lot along with former mayor Ming. She also has experience on the planning commission, chair there. Same with the environmental committee, which they don't have at this point. She's also assured me that she's not interested in running. She is retiring, which is important, and that was one of the stipulations that we found a year and a half ago, is, you know what, we're going to bring someone in, we want to make sure that elections are fair, so that we want to have someone come in, and we're lucky to get former mayor Gary Capata to come in and, and fill the shoes, and he did a great job. Also, what's best for the city of Laguna de Gal is bringing in someone like Lynette that can step, step in running. She knows what she's doing. We don't have to worry about that time. But also, we need some stability here. We've had a rough six months, and I think knowing what Linda has brought to the table, we've seen her work, she's well-respected, we know that we're going to have stability with her. Again, she's a team player, and I really don't want to spend a year trying to figure out what we have coming in here. We've got great people. But for me, I think it's really the most experienced person we have, and the fact that we have this opportunity to bring someone in that can, she knows, she knows the parks. This was her, this was her baby. She knows the gateway. She knows development with Sunpoint. She knows Agora. I just think that is the best decision we could have for one year. Let's bring some stability to the city. I know she'll be a good team player. I can contest that since I've had the pleasure to be on the council with her. So I actually would like to make the appointment. I think it's great for us to finish up the year, make this appointment, so we can start fresh in the new year with a full council, with a city manager, and move forward as we've all discussed. So I would make a motion that we appoint former mayor Linda Lindholm to fill the seat for the one year. Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, thank you very much, mayor. I, I echo the sentiments. You know, special elections are costly, they're divisive, they're, they take time, they, they are distracting, and I think that the, the electorate understands that. And we have an election coming up this next November, any appointment will be interim, and I think it's important that we hit the ground running. I would be more inclined, as Councilwoman Davies said, to go ahead and do the appointment now rather than wait. I don't see any benefit from waiting. I don't know that there are critical decisions between now and, and January sixteenth, but I have been more surprised, I've been surprised more than once in the last year in that regard, and I think it's probably a good idea to have a full complement of, of council members. The, the electorates expect us to have five. I mean, that, that, that is, that is exactly where we're supposed to be, and I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we have that and that we do that as soon as possible. I, I wanted to say thank you to, to everyone that put their hat forward, or put their hat in the ring and, and their name forward. It's not an easy thing to do, and it speaks volumes of who you are as people and, and the dedication that you have to your community. I have thought long and hard about this, and I have, I, I think that the issues that have been coming before us are, are very important. They need to be moved quickly. We need ready access for people that have considered those, and I was glad to see that former mayor Lindholm's name was in that hat, because she's very much in that seat. And I would, I would definitely support an appointment of her, and I, and I would second that motion. Thank you very much, mayor.
This item here on the agenda is where my philosophy clashes with reality. I really believe it's, it's up to the voters to decide who holds the council seat. But when you look at the cost to the taxpayers of anywhere over seventy thousand dollars to have a special election, and also to have a special election, that would be in June, so we would be losing five months, we would be losing half of the term and have a vacant council seat. So while, again, it is, you know, my philosophy that we let the people decide and have them elect someone, the reality is, is that that would be a burden on our taxpayers, and also the representation, because our residents deserve to have five council members sitting up here the whole time, not just half of the remaining time until the next election. So that's what I, I would favor us appointing now. But again, you know, for me, that's a tough decision, philosophy clashing with reality. But we are up here to make realistic decisions. So I have heard a motion and a second to appoint former mayor Lindholm. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations? Okay. All in favor of appointing mayor Lindholm?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And so we've made the appointment, and we are, so then we do not need to call a special election in June. Do you need anything else from the city attorney Dixon?
Your husband's here.
Would you like to do it now, or at the June sixteenth meeting? Or January sixteenth? Do you know what just happened?
She went to the ladies' room and came back. You know you never do that.
Yeah, don't do that. You'll get volunteered for lots of things.
Right.
Sure, come on. City Clerk Gomez, do you have the oath of office?
And thank you to all of you who came tonight, those of you who offered your service to the city. That is greatly appreciated. I know that, that takes, you know, that, that's a big decision, because you know what a time commitment it is. So thank you for making that offer. You know we do things fast. And you two are dressed to match.
You mean Linda, you don't remember doing this after four times? You should have it down my heart.
Kalina, can we get a picture? No, I meant of her taking the oath. No, no, you know, we, we, we still have more of a meeting, so can we do the oath? to be done there?
Yes, I'm
Okay, thank you. Okay, now on to other business and council reports. First are the ad hoc committee reports. Just to, you know, I want to make sure that the council is aware of meetings that take place. So just to be sure that you know that Mayor Pro Tem Jennings and interim city manager Erlinson and interim assistant city manager Bell and city attorney Dixon, and I met with Frank Kim Scott Meyer and Victor Cow of the supervisor, Orange County Board of Supervisors Office. So they are really looking forward to working with us together on the RFP that'll be going out for the Civic Center Plaza project, and we look forward to working together in a, I guess, more than we did in the past. So they are welcoming us into that process. So we had a very good meeting with them. Also, on Monday, myself along with city attorney Dixon and interim city manager Steve Erlinson had a phone call meeting with Shaheen Sadegi of Lab Holdings, and that was to bring closure on the Agora project. So, and there's really nothing to report out from that. Okay, so council comments. Who would like to begin with their council reports?
Sure, I'll make it pretty brief. I went with the ACCLC to DC last Monday and Tuesday in regards to getting legislation for sober living homes. We had a lot of meetings, met with probably about twenty different electives as well as HUD. We were really trying to go and back Darrell Issa's, Congressman Issa's bill in regards to making it a point that every sober living home is really a business, and they should all have permits, whether you're six beds or less. We did find that talking to HUD, it's going to be very difficult to try to change that. So I think what we did is we had, it was a very good learning experience. What we're looking at now is making it that these patients are protected in regards to the care that they're getting, as well as if we can look at where it's being funded, because if you looked when Obamacare Affordable Health Care came out, it basically gave everybody the opportunity to have thirty days of rehabilitation. This rehabilitation can be given to sober living homes, and again, these six beds and under do not have supervision, and that is the concern, and our concern is for the quality and safety of those that are in there, as well as the safety of the residents, and these are in residential areas. So if we can, you know, there's good actors out there. We've got good companies that take care of them, but there's a lot of bad actors, and there's becoming a lot of fraud. And so we also have this being investigated with Paul Ryan and a few other elected, so it's great, because they think they're going to find out that a lot of this money, for instance, they're billing, patients are giving about five thousand dollars a bed every, every month. And when it comes to them billing for drug testing, it costs about forty dollars for a drug test, they're billing fifteen hundred to two thousand to the insurance companies. And this is where the fraud's going, and this is where the cost of your insurance that you're paying keeps going up and up. So if we can really cut this, I think if we cut the funds, we're going to cut the bad actors out, because we all know if the money's not there, they're not going to be there. So this is kind of the avenue we're looking into. We're moving, it's baby steps, but the point is, we're also getting them educated up there. A lot of them weren't aware of what sober living homes were, even though it's really becoming big in coastal areas, Nevada, Florida, even east coast, obviously California. But they're realizing that this is a safety issue, and that it's just a matter of time that these bad actors are going to be in their backyard, whether you're in the Midwest or you're on the coast. So education is really important. We're doing our job. Again, I, I am very happy with the ACCLC and the efforts they're making, and we will continue to fight. This is an issue that's been going on in this city, and it's some, something that I know we're all very passionate about in regards to public safety. So please know we're doing what we can at the federal level, because I believe we've obviously seen that we're not going to get anywhere right now with the state level. So if we can at least get the federal, federal level to make the rules, they can then come down to local level. And then also, real quick, I did get to attend the menorah lighting, which has been my sixth opportunity, and it's such a wonderful thing to see the Jewish community come into Laguna de Gal. They do such a beautiful job and to watch their culture and watch the traditions. It's, it really is a blessing, and again, Parks and Rec did a great job putting it on. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Davies. Councilman Menegar?
On Wednesday, December ninth, I attended
Um, on Wednesday, December 9th, I attended the California Transportation Commissioners Meeting along with Aldi Mobility 21 and a lot of policy decision makers from Sacramento in Riverside. On Thursday, December the 10th, I attended WTS Orange County along with my colleagues on the TCA Board to present, uh, the Orange County Business Council's, um, uh, Executive Director Lucy Dunn, the award for, um, on, on behalf of WTS. On Saturday, December the 9th, along all of my colleagues in the city council, I attended the best small town parade in America, which is our own parade and every year it gets better. This was my 21st parade in our great city that, as I said, every year it gets better and, and the Parks and Rec Department and the Sheriff Department did such a superb job as always, so even flawless. Kudos to, to all of you. Um, on Wednesday, December 13th, I attended the TCA's Ad Hoc Executive Committee Meeting to discuss the salary of our, um, executive director along with a lot of other issues, which they were all unfortunately closed session meetings that I cannot talk about. Um, on Thursday, December 14th, I attended the TCA's, um, board meeting, uh, during the same day, um, I'm proud to see our Public Works Department along with, um, our acting city manager and acting, uh, deputy city manager to be in the city of Lakewood so that our city would receive American Public Works Association's Best Award for, um, our Tier Two project, which is our great, um, Crown Valley Community Park for what the city has achieved, has done, and kudos to our Public Works Department. Uh, in that evening, I went to Irvine to attend the Third Annual Business Industry Association of Orange County along with Ocar, along with OCBC and a lot of other elected officials from 34 cities in Orange County and a lot of supervisors, uh, also attended, along with business leaders, community leaders and, um, a lot of leaders from the educational institutions in Orange County. It was a great night to mingle, to discuss, to share what's going on in Orange County. At the end, our job as public servant leaders of this great city would be to bring back something positive every time, to see how we can share in our cohesive city council so that we can benefit the citizens at large. So, uh, in my opinion, we are on a right path for the upcoming new year, uh, with this new election. By the way, congratulations, uh, to my neighbor, our new council member Linda Lindholm. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, along with all of my colleagues at, as council member Lori Davies mentioned, uh, it was, it was a pleasure to attend the menorahs lighting and, uh, the Hanukkah reception in our great city hall. Um, Laguna Nigal is a model city out of 484 cities in California that we can all live in harmony. We can all live in a beautiful city that everyone, every citizen, every resident is respected regardless of where you come from, regardless of your background, regardless of your religion, regardless of what you believe in, and that's the way a civilized society ought to be. During my past years, I've been traveling all over the US, 46 states, and anytime I come back to Orange County, any, anytime I come back to our paradise Laguna Nigal, I feel that I'm in the best city, in the best city in America, which is the greatest country, but above all, the standard of living is so high that I wanna make sure that we sustain that and, and I'm pretty sure that we're on the right path with, uh, with this new, um, city council. So thank you very much.
Mayor Protem?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, uh, one last thank you to Chief Barr. We've, uh, we've done the formalities, but I really, uh, truly appreciate what you've done for the city and I will miss you and look forward to many opportunities to break bread with you over the, uh, in the future and, uh, and tell you all those stories again. So thank you so much and I really appreciate all you do. Uh, I think it's important that we, uh, that we recognize that Chief Adams and the Orange County Fire Authority, uh, you guys have had a big month, uh, and our, your firefighter brother, all across California have really been, uh, protecting lives and saving property and, and doing things that, uh, we thank God every night that you're out there for us doing. I heard unbelievably 275,000 acres on fire as we sit here tonight in a containment which is month, which could be well a month or, or more into the future. I can't even fathom the scope of what it takes to do that and the sacrifices being made by close to 10,000 firefighters with over a thousand pieces of equipment on property. It's just staggering and you have a sincere debt of gratitude for us and if you would please, on behalf of our city, express to your men and your colleagues how, how appreciative we are of what they're doing and I, I truly appreciate it. You know, this is the last meeting of, uh, what I can only call, uh, a tumultuous year. Uh, I was, uh, I was very buoyed by former Mayor Whipple's, uh, comments, uh, that is spot on. It is a time for reconciliation and bringing together, uh, and, uh, I am very, very pleased that, uh, we have an opportunity to turn a page here to do something right for our city. Uh, you're certainly gonna find, uh, my commitment to do that and I think I speak for the rest of the colleagues up here that they're gonna do it as well and to, uh, our new council member Linda Lindholm, thank you, you, uh, you have our complete support, we look forward to working with you and I appreciate that. I would only end with, uh, with an echo of how wonderful the Laguna Nigal Parade was and how much fun that is and, uh, it buoys my spirits every year. Uh, that goes into the tree lighting and then it turns into the menorah lighting and that's really sort of rounds out my trifecta of, uh, city things that, that make the holidays so bright. Uh, with that, I want to wish everyone an extraordinarily very happy holidays and a very Merry Christmas and, uh, God bless all of you and God bless your family. Uh, we really live in a tremendous city and it's this time of year that I'm most thankful for it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, um, actually, my first day as mayor, I, um, cut the ribbon for a new city, Kinder City over at Community Roots Academy and they gave me the key to the city, which is on my wall in the office, so, um, but it was amazing that all the kindergarten classes had built their own city and they had little stores and, uh, fast food restaurants and schools and a veterinarian and, um, you know, was what that kindergarten's idea of a city was and the things that it takes, uh, that need to come together for a community. So that was, um, pretty, a lot of fun. And, um, something that, uh, for, um, councilmember Davies can relate to, uh, some of the little girls looked at me and they looked at their moms and they go, "Mom, our mayor's a girl." So we still have some stereotypes to break, so the girls, shouldn't be so surprising to them, but, uh, that was cute. Also, uh, on the 7th, I attended the Capistrana Unified School District Mayor's Roundtable and these are meetings that they have with the mayors of the different cities that, um, are in the school district. The district has recently gone through quite an extensive facility needs assessment, um, on each piece of property and what needs to be done just to keep the school operating as it is, what needs to be fixed in the next few years and what needs to be done to add those things which we think our students should have now or in the future, such as a theater or a pool or different things like that. And then they're looking at, how is that going to be paid for and, uh, breaking it down city by city. So I'm glad that the district is including the city, uh, leadership in that. Also had a youth committee meeting and that's where Mayor Protem Jennings and I get our shot of energy and, and hope in the future generation. And didn't the youth committee look cool on those segues in the parade? They had a lot of fun with that, so thank you, uh, to Parks and Rec for that. And the parade, I don't know why Councilman Minigar is qualifying it with the best small town parade in America. It's the best parade in America. So again, but thanks, I know that the volunteers and staff do a tremendous job all year long to make that day happen, so thank you. Had a meeting also, I've talked about our residents who are getting together, who are forming an art committee and, um, the momentum is growing. We do have more and more people who are interested in this, um, becoming a reality in Laguna Nigal. So the art committee is starting something and it's gonna be right here at city hall and it's a word of the month contest. It's just something for people to participate, to have them come to city hall for, you know, uh, those of you who are sitting in the audience, um, you know where city hall is, you come here, you participate, but we have many people in our city who haven't had the opportunity to, so this will bring people here. And each word, a new, each month, a new word will be announced and the word for January is new because we have a new city manager coming, possibly a new chief of police, a lot of new things going on. The artists can interpret that word however, whatever it means for them. Does it need to renew? Does it mean new attitude? Does it mean to learn something new? But this is open from anywhere from first grade, uh, all the way through our most senior seniors. So, uh, information is posted on the city website and we'll leave a press release went out today on it, but please, um, have everyone participate and we'll be doing this every month and, um, then at the city council be meeting, we'll be awarding certificates and the winners will be chosen by the public. The public can come in and vote. So, but it's something to get people, get the arts on their radar. Um, had a meeting with the senior committee and again, that's the other end of the age spectrum from the youth committee, but they are just as active and vibrant as our teenagers. Also, um, presented the Mayor's Choice Award at the Christmas Chalk Walk. So next year, when you hear about the chalk walk, I have to pause as I say it to say it properly, but please go. It is amazing, the art, these artists do these incredible Christmas pictures and it's a shame that once it rains or cars drive over them, the pictures will be gone, but it was, that was great. And, um, Ider Court, one of our neighborhoods, uh, had a Christmas block party that they invited the whole community to. And with all that our fire authority is doing, thank you Chief Adams for having a fire truck there. Uh, the kids loved it, the kids got to climb on it and this is all about, um, connecting them with our first responders and what it takes to be a community, but we appreciate with all that you're doing and all that your, your men and women are doing that, uh, you did have a truck there and had personnel there to talk to the kids. And the menorah lighting, as my colleague said, that was, that was, uh, very good. And, uh, what I liked this year was a novel idea because we saw the kids had these little blue blinky things and you look closer and they were, um, battery operated menorahs that lit up. So they did that this year instead of having the children ha- carrying around lighted candles. So I thought that was a great idea and I appreciate that, uh, consideration of safety. So I'd just like to say, I know we've said our words, I've said my goodbye to you Matthew, but you're, you know, you still have work to do, still got a couple more weeks, but, um, you know, this is a man who's dedicated himself to the safety of others and he's, he has served this community with heart, so I'm so sorry to see him go, but I'm very happy that you get to enjoy your retirement and enjoy your, um, upcoming grandbaby and, um, there's a lot of good things on the radar for you. So I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a happy holiday, a happy Hanukkah. Blessings to you and your family during this holiday season. Spend time together with your family, whether it's your biological family or your family created out of friends, but enjoy each other's company and have a very happy new year. And now we will go on to, uh, city manager and department reports. Chief Barr?
Uh, I do want to say thank you again. Uh, I appreciate everything this city has done for me. Thank you to the council, uh, for your, your guidance, your friendship and your support. I want to thank the department heads again, it's been an amazing team. Um, I still got, uh, I think it's, uh, 15 days and I can't remember how many hours and something minutes left. Um, I, I'm looking forward to that last, uh, that last time here. Um, and I want to thank the city of Laguna Nigal and, and, uh, the residents. Um, it has been an amazing, uh, four and a half years, um, and I, I'm extremely thankful for it and I know this isn't Thanksgiving, but I am thankful. Um, and I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, a Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, um, and, uh, say thank you to my partner, uh, in the fire authority. Uh, we are closer in what we do than we are further, um, and, uh, I admire what they do, we, and, and we share in that, uh, service to the community. During this holiday season, it can be tough for many people, um, and I just want to remind people that you're not alone. Uh, no one's ever truly alone, uh, there are always people to reach out to, uh, and if there's nobody that you know, then you can reach out to us and, uh, the sheriff's department or to the fire authority. And stay away from alcohol this year. It's the same thing as Thanksgiving, you know, it creates more problems than it solves. That's all I have.
Thank you. Interim Assistant City Manager, Bell?
Thank you. Uh, I want to say thank you to Chief Barr for all of his service and for answering the phone when I call with seemingly lots of random requests. Um, I just want to share with the council and with the public, um, you know, Chief Barr is leaving on January 4th, we have a new city manager starting on January 3rd, so it wasn't exactly possible that we could appoint a new chief, uh, with that one day window period that we were left with. We did have seven excellent candidates apply, we'll be conducting interviews, uh, first set, round of interviews will be January 5th, so we're trying very close to get a decision made quickly. Um, in the meantime, uh, Lieutenant Russ Chilton, who is the chief over Dana Point, will be providing administrative oversight services for us in an interim capacity until we get our own chief. Um, so I just want to share with you, we will still have Sergeant Songer to help us all day and every day and, uh, I hope he continues to answer my phone calls. Um, but we are grateful for all the, the work that the sheriff's department does for us, um, despite the fact that we can't always move as quickly as, as we would like, um, based on holidays and other things, chiefs changing their retirement dates, all that kind of stuff. Um, and then last I want to share with the council that Rita Moon, uh, one of our longtime employees, she's been with the city for 27 years, she will be retiring this Friday. So, uh, Mayor Elaine Jeneway has proclaimed officially that Friday, December 22nd, 2017 is Rita Moon Retirement Recognition Day from here on out. And, uh, uh, we wish the best for Chief Barr and his retirement and also Rita and her retirement as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Interim City Manager Erlinson?
Yes, uh, congratulations, uh, Chief Barr, on your retirement. It has been a pleasure working with you. You've been a great coworker, but an even better friend to me and, uh, I will truly miss you as I think the rest of the staff will as well. I look forward to working with, uh, councilmember Lindholm over these, uh, upcoming few months and, uh, again, to everybody Merry Christmas and a happy holidays and please be safe. Good night.
City Attorney Dixon?
Uh, I also would like to, uh, congratulate Chief Barr on his retirement and to say what a pleasure it's been working with you for the last four and a half years. And, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to the council members, staff and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Adams?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Can I say something real quick? I, I apologize Jeff, I really do. I just want, really want to say this. Terry down there, um, he was in my fourth interview, uh, during the process of getting this job as chief and I want to point out a fact that in that fourth interview, it, they played good cop, bad cop on me and Terry did an amazing job, believe it or not, of being the bad cop. I just wanted to bring that up because it was, it was, it's one of those memories, you know, in your, in your life and your career that will never go away and, and I really appreciate everything he's given me as well over the last four and a half years.
And you can't be told now.
Okay Jeff, it's all yours, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to say thanks, uh, to the, uh, Mayor Protem for the comments earlier tonight. Uh, unprecedented fire for December. Still going, 55% contained right now. We had three strike teams, 90 people, our hand crew, uh, and it's, and we're, thankfully, uh, we're gonna get the majority of them back for the holidays. There will be, uh, some of our folks that will be working through, uh, Christmas, uh, to contain this thing. It is just a, uh, it is a massive fire and I think, uh, when it's all said and done, it will be the biggest fire in our state's history. Sadly, and I don't want to, uh, forget to mention, uh, Corey Iverson lost his life on this fire and, um, something like this. and something like this deeply affects us. We will be paying our respects on the twenty-third in San Diego, and it will be a big event, and it will likely be televised. I'd like to say thanks for the parade. It was unbelievable. My family absolutely loves it, and it is a world-class parade. And I'd like to congratulate Linda Lindholm for your appointment tonight. Well done, and welcome back. And, and lastly, to my, my friend and colleague, Matthew, we're going to miss you. You are a pro. Your advice is well taken, and your folks back here that are looking to fill your seat have some big shoes to fill, so congratulations.
Mr. Masbooty?
Congratulations to Chief Barr, and I'm, I'm very happy to announce that we did receive, as Councilmember Miniger, Project of the Year for our community, for Crown Valley Park Tier Two, and working very hard to make our community center, our Tier Three, a wonderful addition to, to the park as well, and happy holidays to all.
Congratulations on that award. That was a great achievement. Ms. North?
Well, I also like to say congratulations to Chief Barr and his retirement. It's been a privilege working with you in the past six months, and I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Also like to announce that we recently launched a Nextdoor account last week, so if you are on Nextdoor, you should have access to our city post. If you're not on Nextdoor, you're able to sign up on nextdoor.com and get your address verified, so you can start receiving information from the city. And with that, like to wish everybody a happy holidays, and we are working on launching an Instagram page as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to congratulate you, Chief, on your retirement. I am going to miss your reassuring smile from across the way. You always made me feel like we were safe, because any time I'd see action going on around here, I'd just look at you, and I knew we were okay. I'm really going to miss that, and I just want to thank you for your friendship. Thank you for the best puppy in the whole world. I, Flex is just the best, and I got to talk to Paige, and we're going to be in touch with each other, so we'll always be part of each other's lives, and I'm happy about that. I will miss you. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your kind words, too, of letting everybody know that we're not alone, that you, you'll always be there. And I also wanted to thank you, Chief Adams, for your service and for your boys and girls out there, that my family and I and a lot of our friends are praying for them every day, that they all come home safe. And I'm very sorry about Iverson. And I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday. But before that, I wanted to also congratulate Linda Lindholm. Hi, Wayne. I'm very excited to be able to work with you. I didn't have the pleasure of working with you for very long as my mayor, but I'm very excited that you're going to be a council member for a while, so thank you, congratulations, and thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, we have a winter break skate camp for ages eight years to thirteen years old on January third through fifth, and registration's available through our website. Our recreation facility holiday hours are posted on the website and in our recreation brochure. And on January tenth, a Wednesday at ten a.m., we're going to dedicate four new pickleball courts at the Laguna Nigal Regional Park in partnership with the county. And thank you, City Council, for all your support during the holidays. I know it's a, it's a lot, so we appreciate you being at all of them. It's a lot of time away from your families as well, and we appreciate it. Congratulations, Councilmember Lindholm. We're happy to have you back. Welcome back. Chief, don't know what to say. We're going to miss you. Getting a little choked up listening to, but I do appreciate your support over the years, your friendship. I know you're not going far. We'll be able to find you, so thank you for everything you've done. We are going to miss you. And also, Chief, you're, you and your guys are always in our thoughts and prayers, and we appreciate everything you do. Merry Christmas, everyone, happy Hanukkah, happy holidays, Happy New Year. We've got some good things ahead, so thank you.
Director Roseberry?
Thank you very much. I just want to start off with telling Lieutenant Barr how much I'm going to miss you. Again, I feel very cheated. I've only been here fifteen months, but I've enjoyed talking about any issue with you. I appreciate that you gave me a couple challenge coins, so I could shout off to my husband at home. And I'm really going to miss you, and I will say the bar is high, so I'm just going to let that know. Very high. And you will be missed. You'll absolutely be missed. To Councilmember Lindholm, I'm going to enjoy getting to know you. We'll be setting up briefings for Sunpoint soon, after the, the beginning of the year, so we will get to know each other a bit then. And just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and happy everything, and we'll be ready to hit the ground running when we get back in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Abazadi?
Thank you. It'll sound as if we're reading from the same script here, but I wanted to congratulate Linda Lindholm as the new council member. Want to wish all the best to Lieutenant Barr. We'll definitely miss you, and happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, anything else in the reports, everyone? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to have City Attorney Dixon read us into closed session.
Yes, Mayor Genoway, members of the council. We have tonight a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five four nine, five six point nine of the Government Code, which is contained in the Brown Act. More specifically, we are requesting a closed session pursuant to the code section that I just cited, based upon exposure to litigation in connection with the investigation of Councilmember Slusiewicz, authorized by the City Council on September fifth. I do not expect that there'll be a report out tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we will now recess to closed session. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a very nice evening.